Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, March 27, 2018, 5:44 PM. And we will now begin the Compton City Council Agenda Meeting. If you could please stand for a moment of silence and a Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Let us begin. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita, Galvan, McCoy, Sharif.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. Under our commendatory resolutions and presentations, we have three special presentations on this evening. The first of the evening is a certificate presentation presented to Bishop Johnny R. Withers Jr., appointed as the bishop of the Western Pacific Regional at the request of Councilwoman Tana McCoy. Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes. Mayor, of course, this is my bishop, but I just think that Bishop Withers just deserves the recognition for being appointed as the regional bishop for the Western Conference. And so I just wanted everyone to acknowledge his accomplishments. He's also a part of the pastors for Compton, and so they're really striving to make a difference in our community, and he just needed to be acknowledged for all that he's doing in the community. So, thank you. Could you guys please join me up front?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So, we, I decided that we, the council, were gonna make a presentation to the bishop, and it says, "From the city of Compton, Bishop Johnny R. Withers Jr., Western Pacific Regional Bishop, a Full Gospel Baptist Church Fellowship." And it's, we are congratulating you on your accomplishments, and it's from Mayor Asia Brown, Councilwoman Jana Zarita, Councilman Isaac Galvan, myself, Tana McCoy, and Councilwoman Emma Sharif. And I just want you to know how much we appreciate the hard work you're doing in the community. We really do, and you deserve this acknowledgement and many more. And so, here you go. This is for you. Could you please, after we take a picture, tell us what your duties are and what you will be responsible for? Okay. Can we have the church family come on up to take a picture? I know you guys are here to support the bishop, and I know he appreciates you guys, so please come on up. Yeah, we're gonna go out this way. We're gonna go this way. The mayor didn't wanna embarrass us, so she just came on around with us. She didn't wanna embarrass us.
First of all, I wanna say to everybody, thank you so much to the mayor. I'm so honored. Thank you so very much to Emma Sharif and to Tana and to all the rest who serve in our elected officials that serve in the city. Thank you so very, very much. Being elevated to this specific position within the Full Gospel Baptist Church Fellowship, it has now given me governor authority over eight states within the Western Pacific region of the fellowship. So, we are now in leadership of Alaska, Hawaii, Washington State, Oregon, California, Nevada, and even Arizona. And so, the largest landmass in the fellowship that I'm a part of, which is led by my pastor, Bishop Joseph W. Walker III, from Nashville, Tennessee. And it's just an honor to be able to serve and be able to represent Compton, not only in the local area, but also in the whole Western Pacific region. So, again, I'm thankful, honored, and really appreciate you all for this here. You did not have to do it, but I'm grateful, really am. I thank you so much. God bless you all.
Bishop Withers, thank you so much again for the hard work and your dedication to the city of Compton. I really wanna say congratulations, because it's something that's well-deserved, so I really appreciate, and I also appreciate you being in the city. So, I told you this before, and I looked at him, I'm like, "Are you a bishop?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "Wait a minute, you're not old enough to be a bishop." But yeah, but it's a pleasure to have you here representing this city and also working with the community and being a part of pastors for Compton is definitely great. Thank you.
That's right. Give it up one more time. And the Word of God reminds us that those that labor in the Word are worthy of double honors. So, I wanna give double honor to Bishop Withers and to the entire Unity Christian Fellowship team for all the work that they do in the church, outside the church, in the community. They're definitely a staple here and have truly been a blessing to the families of the city of Compton. So, I'm excited about God enlarging your territory. Congratulations, and also wanna thank Councilwoman McCoy for bringing this prestigious honor to our attention and fellowship, and to congratulate you and to be a part of your next level. So, congratulations. Thank you.
And now, do we have any Bulls in the house? Do we have any Bulls in the house? Come on up, Bulls! So, the Bulls won the championship for the basketball, and so I want to honor, these are the Compton Bulls, Compton Bulls! That's right! The Compton Bulls! Come on up! Come on up, Compton Bulls! So, yes, they do, and so I just want to acknowledge their championship. They won the trophy, and I was at the game, and so, oh, he plays, he plays, yes. Yes, he does. He plays well. So, I just want to acknowledge them and congratulate them again for winning the championship. I was there when they won. I was most excited, and we're still excited. So, we wanna thank the coach for his dedication to the young men and women in the city of Compton and in the sports world, so we just wanna thank you. That's the honorary member there. He plays ball in halftime. Yes, he plays ball halftime. So, Coach, would you like to say a few words?
On behalf of the Luton Park Compton Bulls, it was exciting for me to take these young kids with our head coach and win the championship, just to give back something to the city of Compton. And I wanna thank y'all for having us.
This is their trophy, and it's City of Compton 2018 DeMar DeRozan Youth Basketball League, First Division Champions. So, we're proud of you guys, and we want you to continue the good work. Make sure you keep your grades up so that you can play sports, because that's the only way you can make it, is if you keep your grades up, because you can't play sports without keeping your grades up. Got it? Okay. Well, when you guys came up, I was like, "Is this the Chicago Bulls?" No. These are the Compton Bulls. Congratulations to you guys on a job well done.
Congratulations, you are champions. You have represented the city of Compton with distinction. You are, you are our future, our next generation, so keep raising the bar, keep succeeding, and we are so proud of you. God bless you guys.
I wanna congratulate you guys on winning, and I wanna give a big shout-out to the Parks and Rec staff, the volunteers that take time to coach the kids, because they don't get paid. So, it's a big commitment, so I wanna tell you guys, congratulations. And my favorite basketball player, Marvin's daughter right there, Ms. Hunt, so keep up the good work, and like they said, make sure you put your schoolwork first, and you guys maybe have a chance next year to win again.
Jana, you wanna say something from your seat? One second. Jana's gonna say something from her seat.
Just congratulations, everybody.
Okay, so, thank you, guys. We appreciate you, and we look forward to you winning again next year. Thank you.
All right, so now I would like to call up the lady of the hour, Ms. Sharon Johnson. Let's give her a round of applause. So, before I present the certificate, I wanna share a couple of good words about Ms. Johnson, and I'm just gonna talk about my personal experience with her. So, you know, we have a really tough job here as councilmembers. You know, you can never please anybody, you can never please everybody, but you know, you try to do the best work that you can do, and you know, some people take advantage of the, you know, the three minutes of fame, and you know, they come and they attack you, and you know, they take personal attacks on you, but it's always been refreshing every Tuesday to see that beautiful, lovely face come right here and, you know, pull the microphone down so she could talk, and you know, she's been nothing but professional here. She's been like the breath of fresh air in the council chambers the five years that I've been here, and you know, her life, dedicating her life to the city of Compton, working in the library for 38 years? 36 years. Let's give a round of applause for that. So, I'm definitely gonna miss you, not working right here in Compton no more. You know, I would tell you that, you know, to pop your head in here every now and then and tell us hi, but I don't want you to go through that, you know? Enjoy your retirement, you worked really, really hard for it. So, I wanna present you with this certificate of recognition presented to Sharon Johnson. Congratulations! This commendation serves as recognition of a job well done. During your 36 years of library service, you have made a positive impact on the lives of generations of residents of the city of Compton and Los Angeles County. You will truly be missed. The 98,000 residents of the city of Compton are shouting. are shouting hip, hip, hooray, and wishing you a very happy retirement. Resolved this 27th day of March 2018 by Mayor Brown, Councilwoman Zarita, myself, Councilwoman McCoy, and the entire city of Compton. So thank you so much for all your service, dedication, and I don't know, is this working? Okay, cool. So maybe my colleagues want to say something?
Ms. Johnson, I've known you for many years, many, many years. And as Councilwoman Galvin said, you've always been very pleasant. We really appreciate your service to the city of Compton. We appreciate you coming over and updating us continuously with things that was going on in the library. And I just wish you a happy, happy retirement. Job well done, and thank you.
Ms. Johnson, 36 years is a long time. And I just want to say congratulations to you. You've done an exceptional job here with the community, working with the children in this community and the parents as well. So I really want to say thank you for that and congratulations on a job well done. But also, I had an opportunity to attend your event that you had there on Saturday. And it was really, really well, as a matter of fact, received, but also it was very well attended. And I had enjoyed the reading that from Dwayne Fowler, from his different books and everything that he has written. So I do hope that we all will be able to go by at some point and pick up some of his literature for the books that he's written. So again, congratulations on your 36 years of service to the city of Compton.
Ms. Johnson, I've seen you for many years, and you always are pleasant, have a beautiful smile on your face, and you always come bringing good news about the programming that is available at the Compton Library. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of all the children and people that utilize the library for your rich programming and services that you have delivered with love, kindness, and care. I know that this is probably bittersweet for you, but I really hope and pray that you enjoy your latter days and that you fill them with everything that your heart desires. God bless you, and thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman Galvin. No, I don't think so. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, I'd just like to say congratulations to you. First of all, I apologize for not being able to come down. But it is truly an honor to have worked with you for so many years in the city of Compton, not only as a councilperson, but the years that I used to visit the library. So I'd just like to say that, and it's funny when Galvin said what he said, because ever since I can remember Galvin taking this seat, when Ms. Johnson would come up to the mic, he would always say, "Wow, she's a breath of fresh air. She's always so positive. She always has something good to say." So congratulations. You are appreciated, and you will be missed. But enjoy. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, to Mayor Brown, all the council, and Councilwoman Galvin for this honor. It's been a wonderful journey, 36 years. I mentioned last week, I started as the children's librarian at Compton Library in 1982, and returned as the manager in, actually, it was December of 1994. So most of my career has been here in the city of Compton, and it has indeed been an honor and a pleasure to serve the community. And I thought about some of the many changes that I've seen over the years, that the services that we've been able to offer at the library. When I first started, we had four typing rooms. Now we have public access computers with Wi-Fi and printing access. We offer homework-centered services for our children and students, and just a variety of other programs and services. We have a partnership with the LA County Law Library, and also with the LA County Museum of Art, where we offer families for programs and also for women empowerment, and just a variety of other things that we've been offering. And with our new library director this year, we started offering more programs. Every month, we're offering programs for children, teens, and adults, January through June. So we're very proud to be able to do that. So just a variety of things have happened over the years that I'm very proud to have been a part of. And I couldn't have done it all. We have a wonderful staff that have been very supportive, and I couldn't have done it without them. So I want to give my thanks to them as well. So again, it's been a wonderful journey, and I'm very thankful and proud to have been able to serve the city of Compton all these years. And thank you very much for this honor.
And for those of you at home and in the audience, my colleague, Councilwoman Zarita, is on crutches, which is the reason why she's not standing down herself. I don't want no one to think she's boycotting or anything, so, all right.
Thank you. We will now proceed forward with public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Pastor K.W. Toulis?
Good evening to the mayor, to the city council leadership here in the wonderful city of Compton. I stand here today as representative from our Congresswoman Annette Baragon, inviting the entire city of Compton and its residents as she hosts her second Congresswoman office hours here this Thursday, March 29, 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. We're asking that you all come out, and you all come and speak and get to know your Congresswoman, ask her any questions you might have in reference to all the work that she's been doing in the wonderful Washington, DC. So we wanted to just take this time to invite the residents to come out this Thursday, March 29, 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Right here in Compton. Our office is located here in the City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Attra Nguyen?
Hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've been here, but I have three quick questions, if possible. Number one, Captain Thatcher and Rambo, can you guys please give us an update on the missing guns? Okay, the second question would be for our city attorney, since we really only have one city attorney that went to school that, you know, has a card. I want you to please explain the purpose of the chamber, what it does, because we have five in the city of Compton, but only one of them is legal. And that one has been established since 19, what, 29, 30, somewhere in there. And there's a lot of talk. So I believe if you nip it in the bud, maybe not today, maybe you can hold a workshop where people can ask questions, we can get to the bottom of it, and then we can let a lot of that go, because right now, Compton really needs healing, and we have to start somewhere. The last thing is, the Gateway Town Center has been sold, the one. I just want to know, does anybody have an update on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. David Irons?
David Irons, resident of Compton. My sister died. Why are you sorry to hear? You know my sister. Anyway, my sister died from experimental drugs. And I have been coming to council meetings, talking about opiates, and you guys are talking about marijuana. Hey, I only came here because I'm angry, because I was feeling sad. I say, "I can't go in there sad." I got to come here angry. My sister had, what's her name, deodorant, antiperspirant deodorant, and she smoked cigarettes. And they got a disease for that name. Do you know they have actually a disease for a name for people that use antiperspirant deodorants and smoke cigarettes? And y'all still use it. Some people are affected differently, and some people go to the hospital and die. So the only reason I came here, because I'm angry. If I was feeling sorry, I'd be up here crying. I'm serious. I'm a very emotional person. I cry easy, so it ain't no big deal. Yeah. But, you know, listen to some things. Listen. I mean, when I come up here and speak, opiates is killing everybody. These people around here, man, these people are crazy, talking about marijuana. You know what? My family, I and I, lost my loved one. They talk about how my sister and I got along when she got sick. The pharmaceutical, I don't know what, well, Jesus Christ rode on your ass. So when he went into town, he was on the ass, you know, because the ass told him, "Don't go down the street." Jesus Christ started beating his ass. The ass told him, "Hey, man, don't you see that man about to kill you up there?" So Jesus Christ had to happen. Turn around the ass. And if you kiss my ass, my ass is going to kick you, because ain't nobody going to kiss my ass, if you understand what I'm saying. Because I am a, I believe in Jesus. I believe in some of the stuff he did. He lost his life because he healed somebody on the Sabbath. The doctors say, "Come back in two weeks." I don't even go to them chumps. I ain't been to the doctors. Oh, I'm glad you cut me off, because I've got a lot more to say.
Thank you. Mr. Muhammad Mubarak?
Mayor, Council, good evening, city manager. I'm here today to, it's not about me, it's about David's sister. Her name was Billy Irons. And Billy and my sister were friends, and we all grew up together here in Compton. We went to Vanguard, and we went to Centennial High School. My sister lost her battle with throat cancer three weeks ago. And this past Wednesday, we said goodbye to her. Maybe a day after that was when David's sister lost her life. We all knew each other, and we all grew up here in Compton. And we had a struggle with my family trying to do her farewell services. But through the grace and mercy of God, we all pulled it together. And we said goodbye to her. And I want to thank David personally for the support that he gave me as I was trying to pull it all together. I was blessed today to go down to the Hall of Administration, and the County Board of Supervisors ended their session in my sister's name. So I decided to come here today to encourage you all to end this session in Billy's name. Billy Irons. She is from Compton. She lived on 138th, right off of Palm Alley. And she was a beautiful woman. And the Irons were a beautiful family. And I was close to David throughout most of my life, and still am today. You know David, and you know his personality. And he's a nice guy, so don't get him wrong. So I encourage you all to pray for all of us, give us the strength from God that we need to keep moving forward. I want to thank you all for your support.
Thank you, and our condolences. Mr. Holyfield?
You know, I like to have your undivided attention. It was brought to my attention that the council friends like Ms. Emma Sharif, 4th District, we'd like to have the people who get up here and speak to you to have your undivided attention. We put you there. I hope I delivered that message well. See what I mean? Now, I can just stop, or I can sit down, or we can vote somebody out. Like to have your, and there's nothing wrong with that. So many things were happening. This young man who just spoke, he happens to be the greatest artist in the state. He did the mural on Compton Boulevard. He did the mural at Walton. He did the mural right outside of here. And yet, we weren't listening to him. Okay? So my thing is this here. We're going to have to get, you have a bad report from the state, a very bad report. We're going to have all the council people here to do our business four times a month. We're going to have, get rid of the city treasurer sign. And if he's here, we want to report on our money, and from the controller also. We used to have that with the taxpayers, and we work hard and don't get any money. You see what I mean? Conversation in boogaloo. You see what I mean? Can I get a witness? Yeah, is what I'm saying. So, and then he only show up once a month. I hate to say this, it's not about love. We need to take care of our business. We need to take care of our business. Okay. The next thing, Saturday, had a wonderful event at Gonzalez Park. Wonderful event, sponsored by the YAL Center, volunteers, and Martha back there. We want to thank you, Martha. One of the greatest events the city has held. And the support from the Sheriff Department in terms of the walkers, the things for the kids, and et cetera. And I wondered where most of you, see, now, I'm telling you, I've been a business person and a person who moved things for a long time. We do not need a councilperson who do not have attention, and then they only show up once a month. And love don't have nothing to do with you. You don't have to love me. But that's the truth. And the people worried about and concerned about our money. Okay? Brought to my attention, number one, in the 4th District, there's a junkyard. I mean, there's a, used to be a dump situation, a whole block. A senior citizen lady said at the Dollar Heights Center to me the other day, "Mr. Holyfield, I want you at the council meeting to bring to the council's attention, in your district, ma'am, that trash company. It's a block long, and rats," she said, "is running down by, to my house. And it's been condemned. Why can't the city remove that, do it in its domain and tear that down? Why can't you?" It's been brought to your attention before. It used to be the trash company on Alameda, in the 900 or 1000 block. Tear that block out of there and get rid of those rats that's running down the street. These are the things that we have to deal with. And it's been brought here before. I heard one of the activists mention about that building over there for the trash company. And that's what we should be dealing with, not holding conversations and love things. Take care of our business, because we're all over the news. We're all over these reports. We're in 40-some million dollars worth of situation, and we're doing a boogaloo and parties. Do one party a year to get this other stuff, and use those thousands of dollars for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I don't usually do this, but since Mr. Holyfield brought it up, I would like for the City Manager to please give an update as to what is happening with that.
I'll just ask that, um, the City Manager, um, be prepared to provide an update under the City Manager's report.
Okay.
Um, I know that you follow up earlier this week, as did I, on the same issue, so if you can be prepared to give an update on that, um, a detailed update, so that the citizens can know what hap, what's happening with the demo of the former trash site. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. Mr. Floyd Smith?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, Miss Mayor, City Council, uh, person, staff, and the community. Good evening. Uh, the homeowners and business owners are having a hard time understanding what is really going on with the financial of the city, uh, state financial. Uh, what do it means when state financial lawyers state that the city of Compton is headed to a close? I don't know what "close" mean, but it's serious. Uh, the homeowners want to know, how can we help to stop the financial hardship that we are facing? Uh, we are the taxpayers, and, and the city can, uh, uh, depends on the homeowners, uh, because they're not going anywhere. And we are third, fourth, fifth generation of, uh, coming up as children that live in the city over thirty, forty, fifty years. And we the baby boomers. And now, we got our children to come up, and, uh, because of the times, uh, we know that they can't afford a home, so we stay in the home so that they can have a home. So, they out there, and everything is sky high, taxes sky high, they, they're not gonna be able to do anything. So, we have to keep our homes here, but we have to also understand that we are the ones that are paying your salary. We are the, the power. We are the people. Okay? This is our Fourteenth Amendment right, uh, to, to, as a U.S. citizen born. So, we have the right. So, when we pay taxes, we vote for you guys to come up here to represent us, okay? We tell you what to do, you don't tell us what to do. But sometime, we get confused when we get elected, and then the whole table turn. And then it's like, oh, when we come up and talk, um, we nobody. We the pagan, and you the king. So, we are asking the homeowners to help sign a term limit for our elected officials. This is on the right, and the power of the people to help get the city back on its feet. We can get it done. Our water bill is out of control. Uh, we don't make water. Uh, we pay for the pipes, but you'll get bonds. But I can't, a couple of weeks, and I said that, uh, uh, I know that y'all get rebates on the trash. So, we are requesting that you put that on the, uh, like, for the bond, okay? This is a way you can help bring down the bond, get y'all, uh, y'all financial count back in order. Take the money and do what you have to do first. Priorities first. The city comes first. We don't want to close the city. What, what's gonna be the county if we lose the city? Okay? So, everybody gonna be out of job. Okay? So, we want to keep everybody here. We're all trying to work together, the, the homeowners, and really the homeowners. The business owners get their taxes and go to, uh, wherever they're going. But the homeowners is the one that's here, and that, you know, y'all pensions come out of our taxes and, and all that. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
God bless you.
God bless you too. Ms. Diana Medel, from Assemblymember Gibson's office. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Diana. I'm with Assemblymember Mike Gibson's office. I have just a few announcements, um, and opportunities for our youth and our constituents. Um, the first one is, um, a lot of our youth are trying to obtain jobs. To get a job, you need experience. And a lot of the employers now require a lot of experience from our youth. And so, our office is offering, um, an internship program for, um, we go as younger as juniors in high school, um, and we want to ensure that, uh, our youth take an opportunity to get job experience, whatever experience it may be, uh, so that they are well-prepared for the job or the career that they want to go for. So, I have some flyers in the front, if any, uh, youth are interested in applying for an internship. Uh, our office is open usually during the summers with a lot of interns, uh, and just providing experience for them. Um, just a reminder, our nonprofit class is April twelfth at the East Rancho Dominguez Library. And, um, it's free for all of those who would like to learn how to open up their very own nonprofit and, um, learn how to file that officially to receive their 501(c)(3) status. Uh, another reminder, our California Legislative Black Caucus Scholarship is due April sixteenth. Uh, we are going to the schools in our district to make sure that our students are applying for this scholarship. We'll take some copies to the class, we'll fill it out with them right then and there. Just let us know if you need us to come out to any schools. We're more than happy to do it, uh, so that way we can take it back and make sure that it gets delivered to the right hands on the right time. Uh, another reminder, our African-American Leaders of Tomorrow Summer Program is coming up very shortly as well. The deadline for that is May first. And this is just an amazing experience for our students to really go out to, um, Cal State Dominguez Hills and live the college life and, uh, get career readiness and a lot of skills that they really need now, uh, to move forward on whatever career they want to. So, uh, I've emailed all this information to all of you in hopes that you can share it with our youth, um, and thank you.
Thank you very much for the updates.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Kelly from Third District. First off, let me say, Saturday's event, I think Spring Wellness Jubilee in Gonzalez Park, was second to none. It was extraordinary. And I want to thank Martha and the Sheriff Department and Jana for putting on such an event the entire family enjoyed. What the hell is going on with the fire department? You know, that's my pet peeve. Now, I thought, Mr. City Manager, that police and firefighters work together. They don't, these people do not advertise outside of Compton for a city manager. So, we don't advertise outside for engines, engineers. I, I read something, and whatever it is, straighten it up, because that's the problem with me. Mr. City Manager, whenever the Transit Center was asked someone wanted to rent or lease, they brought it before the council. Why wasn't Asia Brown's rental or lease or whatever she had to do to go over there in the Transit Center? Question. How much is she paying? Is she paying for it, or the taxpayers paying for it? Who, do you have a key to that building, or anyone have keys to the building? Does she still have an office in City Hall? No wonder we don't have any money in the city of Compton. She's trying to use every penny. And what about the utilities? Are you still over there, Asia Brown? Mr. City Manager, there's over a quarter of a million dollars being spent on liaisons. Some of that money could be spent on fixing some of these potholes, put some slurry over it too. You only need one. Tanya could tell you she was one during her time. You have one very experienced liaison, that's Deidra. Get her. She is so professional. So, I, this is my suggestion. You need money, we're out of money. This is one way to get some money. Also, I appreciate all of you looking at me while I talk to you tonight, because you're always looking at yourselves back here on this TV. Oh, and also, uh, Emma, in the seventies and eighties, First Church had a young pastor who became a regional bishop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., uh, yes, ma'am, there's one more speaker, um, Ms. Maria Villarreal.
Buenas noches, good evening. My name is Maria Villarreal.
Good evening.
Thank you for answering. I am here tonight, but I, while I was, uh, listening to the speakers, you know, we can never move forward, as long as we have a group of people who's trying to pull you down. And not me personally, because I'm, I'm not gonna allow that to happen. Everybody complains about the chambers. How many chambers we have in Compton? We have ten. Thank you. Maybe they doing business without license, maybe we don't know. But the thing of it is, that bothers me when I'm trying to help people, and someone come, I received two phone calls today, and that was weird to me. And now, we have one person asking about the chambers. What did the chambers do, Mr. Rambo, City Manager? We should know what the chambers do. Let me tell you what we do. We promote, provide, and protect. That's, uh, homework for all of you to, to, to know what we do. We promote the businesses for the second level. We provide information so they can be informed. And we protect the businesses from people, like someone who so-called them chambers, and call them that they part of the Health Department. Last week, we had one visit in one of the businesses. I'm not gonna name names now, but I got the names. He says to the business owner, "Why you doing this this way? Why you doing that that way?" He is nobody to come in and question the business owners. That's my business. That's the way I run my business. That's not his business. So, we protect them from that. Then, once you, we don't comply with that, he says he's gonna call the Health Department, because he's got somebody that, that related to him, that he is, uh, part of the Health Department staff. That's what we do, if you don't know. We protect the businesses from every individual who thinks that the small businesses can come in, you can come in and take money, and just put your cart in there and take money from them. We protect the small businesses from people that they call their names chambers, that they don't exist. Compton Chamber and Latino Chamber of Commerce has been here for years. That's history. And like parodying, try to get rid of the Latino Chamber of Commerce, you guys trying to get rid of the Latino Chamber, it's not gonna happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. City Manager, um, I would ask that you really look into that, because I think it's wrong for anybody to, uh, try to intimidate anybody, and that's trying to make, earn an honest dollar in the city of Compton. And I've heard similar stories about this individual. I think it's the same person from different business owners that are having projects. In my district, they're saying that this guy comes and gives them his card and says that if they join their cha, his chamber for, you know, five hundred bucks or a thousand bucks, he can come to the podium and promote them and help them get it over the top. So, I think it's something that we really gotta look into, and I hope that, uh, you and your staff take that claim very, very seriously.
Thank you.
Limboon, City of Compton. First of all, I want to say, um, last week, we had a council person in District One that mentioned about the street, uh, street pavement study. Street pavement studies have been done before, and they have been, the last and most recent one was twenty fourteen. So, the remark that you made that, you know, you guys have to get a study before you can do anything to the streets was not true. The other, um, issue that I want to address is in regards to the Transit Center. The Transit Center was built with lease revenue behind money. The Transit Center belongs to the public. The Transit Center, when occupied, is supposed to be voted on by this body and not by one person. The city of Compton is a city council-driven city with a city manager as CEO. We do not have a dictator. The comment that was made by Ms. Klinkscale Brown was that others mayor, other mayors do this in other cities. Yeah, there are satellites, and I did do research on it. And the most common chartered city is Los Angeles. And that's because if you read, Gil Garcetti is the head of that city. That is a strong mayor city. So, to say that other mayors do that, that's not a good enough excuse. We, the people, want our building back. We, the people of Compton, know that this city has a problem with its finances. We have nothing to give away. And last week, when you gave that property away, we did not have enough information regarding that property. And it was given away to the two men that owned the Gateway Town, Town Center, that used to own it, I want to say. And they were given eight point four million dollars. So, I don't think they were too poor that they could not pay for that property that you gave them. The information as to who's on the sides of that property was not given to us, and it was inadequate. It was another rock being thrown by Ms. Brown, and all of you guys caught it, because she was not here to vote on it, but you did. I'm gonna fight to get our property back. And not to pat myself on the back, but I am the one to bring in the state comptroller. I have actually been sending them invoices and documents for several years now. And when they did come in to conduct the audit, many of the invoices were missing. And I just happen to have them. But the thing of it is, is that everything I get from the city, I pay for it. No one gives me any copies, and I don't go to any city employees. But, Ms. Klinkscale Brown, either you use this office, or you get out of Compton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boon. Um, I would just ask that the city attorney clarify, um, one critical statement, um, especially when there are allegations that the city is giving away property, which is not the case. Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. In regard to the, uh, vacation item that was on the agenda, I believe, last week, I thought the city manager and the, uh, planning director, um, had a very good, uh, description of what was going on. But to clarify, the city did not own this property in fee simple. We weren't the, we didn't have ownership. We couldn't sell the property. The property was donated to this, to the city for a public use. Once that public use is, has ended, then there's the hearing that's required, and the property can go back to the, uh, to the adjacent property that made the donation in, in the first place. So, the strip that was in question was donated for a public use. We had a hearing where it was found that public use is no longer required. Then the property reverts back. So, the, um, accusation that property was given away that could be sold is not, um, accurate under the law of, uh, vacation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for the clarification. Madam City Clerk? Oh, sir? Could you just state your name for the record?
F. Hernandez. We are living in a city that is disconnected with the residents you are required to protect and serve. You are absolutely sitting without any zeal or desire to address the plethora of issues that are plaguing the city. There is absolutely no actual direction by the city council to further the interest of the constituents elected you to serve. I notice a constant fait accompli, maybe backdoor deals in this city council. Look at the agendas for the past few months. Look at the agenda today. Where is the plan to fix the streets? Trim the trees? Light the streets? Fit, fight prostitution? Curb drug dealers? Use those expensive security cameras to solve and prosecute crimes? There is no action. Why isn't the Public Works Director being placed front and center, center every single meeting to report to us on a weekly basis what they are doing to actively repair, not patch our streets? There is a running joke- There is a running joke by all of the City Council members regarding a street survey that was made a few years ago that outlined a plan to repair the streets in a certain maintenance schedule. Guess what? It rained last year. It rained this year. The streets are worse. That survey is out of date, and it took you three... A minimum of three months to put road markings on Compton Boulevard. Guess what? There's wear and tear already on that street that you patched. Last year, I mentioned the budget deficit before the audit findings were public. You don't need a street survey to see that the streets need repair. You don't need an auditor to see that there's no care for our money. Focusing on Agenda Item Number Seven, Muni Services Past Due Two Months for Fourth Quarter 2017. Guess what? First Quarter 2018 is due in four days. Who's responsible for this? Do you even care to look at the agenda? Why did you use a company in Limboon to buy airline tickets? Was it cheaper? Or you couldn't find one in Compton to use? If we don't have an airline travel company in Compton, don't you think it's your fault for not making the business welcome? Same thing when you buy food. It's always, or more often than not, purchased from outside of Compton. I know why. We all know why. The taxes in Compton are really high. Ms. Brown ran away from the City Hall, got a new office. All of a sudden, there was a satellite connectivity agenda item to better connect our city offices. Ms. Brown is running away again to run for Congress. This play will play out this way. I helped the community receive millions of dollars in funding towards a balanced budget. Measure P is a catch-all. We pay for everything.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, the public hearing, I'm requesting that we reschedule that hearing to April the 17th at 5:45 PM. After checking the records, it was not published properly. So I'm asking that that hearing be brought back April 17th at 5:45 PM.
Okay, do you need a motion? Reschedule?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're at consent?
Thank you.
Agenda?
Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number four under City Manager's report is a request of the Los Angeles County Registered Recorder County Clerk to waive all fees for the use of the Dollar High Community Center for poll worker training for the June 5th, 2018 statewide direct primary election, requesting Sunday, May 13th at not... From 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM and Sunday, May 27th, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
City Attorney's Report?
I want to ask that, under the City Manager's report, that the City Manager just gives a verbal update on the trash company demolition, as well as have a couple other items, but I'll wait till you... The elevator, and then also, if you could also schedule a time for the appropriate departments within your department. I know that the City Attorney, the Treasurer, the Controller, everyone work collectively for the audit findings and also for the action plan. So if we could communicate that to the residents, I think that they should be a part of this process to understand what the city's responses were to the findings, as well as what the corrective actions will be and the policies, the corresponding policies moving forward. So I think we can just start with what our initial response... responses were, and then as you all continue with the action plan, continue to update that, and that can be a part of our monthly financial report. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, specifically on the first item, which is the 1105 South Alameda, which is the old trash company. Four vendors were solicited for RFP for the demo. We received quotes from two of those four folks that responded. Because it's going to be a council item before you, I'm not going to talk about the dollar amounts and the ranges. That resolution is in the City Attorney's Office now for review, and we hope to bring that to you. The next available date is April 10th, but we're trying to get it on before that particular date. So that's where we stand with the demo project.
Just one more time for the record, you said April 10th?
April 10th is the soonest we can get it on the agenda, but we'd like to get it on sooner.
Okay.
But the City Attorney's Office is reviewing the resolution now.
Thank you. And after the council takes action, when is the soonest that we can issue a notice to proceed?
I'll get back to you on that, probably in the following week or two after that, but I want to give you a specific date.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, ma'am.
As it relates to the Alameda site, did we ever verify whether or not the gas tanks were still underground?
There's... To my knowledge, there's no gas tanks over there, so the soil is clean. So when we demo it, it will be a clean piece of property.
We know when they were removed because there were gas tanks underground.
I'll bring that back to you. The General Services Director, are you aware of that, gas tanks? Okay. We'll get back to you in the next report, but I don't think there's anything there now.
There were.
So there was? Okay. Regarding the elevator, so elevator number two in the City Hall has been out. Amtech Elevator Services came out a number of times to try to remedy the problem, and then they realized that using some less invasive techniques to fix it, then we discovered that we need a complete cylinder overhaul. We received three quotes. The quotes are listed in my memo here, but again, this is going to be a council item. We're not going to talk about the quotes, but they'll come to you in our RFP. And we're going to try to bring that to the April 3rd council meeting, if we can get it on that agenda.
Okay. And then also, if you could provide an update or a schedule as to when the citywide pothole stabilization will be brought forward for the council consideration?
I spoke to the Public Works Director yesterday, and we're going to try to put an RFP... By the end of the week, for the citywide pothole stabilization. And that's just stabilization for the potholes in the city until we can actually start our larger projects. You guys know that, contrary to what one of the audience comments just stated, there have been several items before you guys, as you know, to do larger projects such as the Central Avenue Phase Two and then the Community Development Block Grant, which covers a number of streets within the city that are full rehabilitation projects. The tree trimming contract also was passed, and that contract is located in City Hall now awaiting signature of everyone. So there have been a number of items that the council has passed regarding potholes and streets, as well as the trees. And I can give a short update on... Very quickly regarding the State Controller's recommendations. So on March 16th, we formed a committee, an executive committee that consists of myself, the two Assistant City Managers, the City Controller, the Budget Officer, and one of our administrative assistants in the City Hall. In that committee, we meet weekly with the City Attorney, also present, and we examine all the recommendations that were brought forth by the State Controller's audit. There are 187 total recommendations. So of those 187, over the last... Between 2007 and 2016, one of the tasks is to look for redundancies. In other words, there may be 14 notices that cash handling procedures needed to be looked at. So that's a redundant audit finding and audit recommendation. So we're reviewing... Also reviewing and updating the personnel rules. And we're looking at audit committees, which was a recommendation from the Civil Grand Jury's 2012 Financial Report on Chartered Cities Within the County. An audit committee, in essence, will take a look at who we select as our auditor for our financials each year. And they will ensure also that the audit... They will review the audits and then ensure that every five years, minimally, we go out to RFP on those audit firms that take a look at the city. And then the next steps are, we meet every Thursday. We're starting budget meetings right now, so we meet every Thursday to discuss the implementation plan. And we also sent our status of recommendation implementation to the State Controller so they're aware that we're fully cooperating.
Thank you. And then also, regarding departmental presentations, I know that a schedule was provided to the City Council, but if we need to revise the dates, we should do that and also post that on the city's website so that the public can be aware of when they can get those reports on those particular departments?
Yes. We go over the department presentations each week with the city clerk. I meet with the city clerk and the city attorney on Monday mornings, and we talk about what's available and time limits on the council agenda. So we'll put the calendar on there.
Okay.
But it'll be subject to change because depending on the presentations and public hearings.
Okay, I'd just like to be able to have a working calendar that we can at least reference to and make sure we're on schedule. And then also, we requested for the Public Works Department presentation to come back to the City Council with the various changes and amendments that were requested in terms of timelines and also fund balances for the various accounts, for the measures, Prop A, C, and all of those various gas tax funds. So when will that updated presentation be available for the council?
So it's the council's pleasure. The next department was supposed to be Water. Would you like the Water Department to stand down and allow the Public Works Department to do their presentation? Or would you like them both at the same time?
It's to the pleasure of the council, but I do believe the Public Works presentation is very critical and timely regarding the streets. And Water is also critical. So if we can at least have one day for each presentation so that we can really take our time to digest the information. So if you want to keep the Water schedule as is and then bring Public Works after that, that's fair.
Okay, so Water is up next, and then after Water, we'll bring back Public Works.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
City Attorney's Report?
Madam Mayor, City Council, we have closed session discussions being proposed for this evening. The subject is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation for the following cases. Bradford versus City of Compton. California appellate district second, case number B 276236. Admin Naman versus City of Compton. Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number TC 029033. Ann McGee versus City of Compton. Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BC 628618. Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9A.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number seven is approval of warrants. Warrant number 244263. March 20th, Muni Service for Utility Users Tax, October through December of 2017 in the amount of $14,726.80 requested by the City Manager. Warrant number 244294, March 22nd. Airline tickets for less... For airline tickets for the Fire Chief Conference in an amount of $367.30 requested by the Fire Department and warrant number 244295, March 22nd. Los Angeles County Fire Department Certification Unified Program Agency in the amount of $10,681 requested by the Fire Department. Total amount of warrants, $25,811.10.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Your at council comments?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilwoman Galvane?
All right. You know, I don't want to steal my colleague's comment, but I really want to commend Councilwoman Zarita and everybody that helped her out. I know Martha was helping her at the event that they had on Saturday at Gonzalez Park. I wasn't able to attend, but I seen the pictures and the videos on a social media. It looked like it was well-attended, so I want to commend you on a great event. And I want to encourage you to keep doing them because our community... They really benefit our community a lot. I wanted to make a recommendation to the City Manager. I know that we're trying to find... For the report of the State Auditor, I know that we're trying to find ways to save money. So I wanted to, if you can bring back an item to the council soon, talking about removing some of the unnecessary commissions and the compensations that go along with that. I know that in the charter, it says we only have a few of them that are really required. So I think that we should look at every way we can to save some money. Let me see. I also want to announce my fifth annual Easter basket giveaway this Saturday. It's going to take place at 10:00 AM at Wilson Park. It's free for all the kids. We have a big Easter egg hunt, pictures with the Easter Bunny. Every kid that shows up gets an Easter basket. We're going to have live music, free food, a lot of games right there. So I'm looking forward to it. Anybody that wants to come out and volunteer, you're more than welcome to do so. And it's from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Wilson Park. The address is 123 North Rose Avenue, Compton, California. So yeah, so make sure you guys come out there. I want to give a big shout-out to Marvin Hunt and the Parks and Rec staff for helping me with the event. I want to thank Repo Graphics for helping me with the flyers and for doing... Helping me with the award that we presented tonight to Ms. Johnson. I'm really going to miss her a lot because, you know, like I said, she was a breath of fresh air here all the time, and I'm just really happy for her and excited for her retirement. Also, I requested an item on the agenda last week and for us to approve all facilities used that the Successor Agency or the City of Compton owns. And I was wondering if you can give me an update when that's going to come back?
On the Successor Agency property?
What are they called now?
It's...
Yeah, Successor Agency property. Remember, I don't know... I mean, I don't think I was dreaming, but I think that I recommended that we bring an item back for anybody that wants to use any Successor Agency properties. The council votes on it and approves it.
I... Okay. I think... But... All right. I think you mean the... Like the metro center?
Right.
Okay, so I'm working with the City Attorney on that item. We'll bring that back as soon as we can.
All right, all right. Also, I want to give a big shout-out. I didn't do it last week, but I want to give a shout-out to our traveling team from the City of Compton and basketball. I was... I ran into them in Las Vegas, and they were playing in the championship tournament. So I think they came in second place in the whole region, so I want to give them a shout-out. What was the name, Marvin? The team? The Gymrats. Yeah, and they train right there at Luters Park in my district. So I want to, you know, give them a big shout-out for coming in second place. And let me see. Yeah, I think that's it. Yeah, that's it for today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galvane. Councilwoman Zarita?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Hello, everyone. And once again, I still have my pulled hamstring, so I'm still going to do what I swore to do. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that helped my event be a success on Saturday. That's one of those events when the show must go on, you know? One monkey don't stop a show. And I want to thank staff, united hands, Deputy Heartless at the YAL for keeping everything moving, the Parks staff. And a big shout-out to Congresswoman Annette Baragon that came out and really enjoyed Gonzalez Park. And Galvane, are you going to wear your Easter Bunny suit at your basket giveaway?
I think you'll believe it.
That'd be a sight. And last week, I asked for, you know, just... I know I'm Cecil Rambo, is Cecil Rambo, but just with the past here, just want to keep it alive. Last week, I asked for a report on the credit card. So can you just give me a timeline? Still, we still working on it?
So you want to report on all the credit card expenditures?
That was mentioned in the state audit.
Okay. Now, I'm working with the City Controller on that, so she's pulling all that stuff up. And I think she sent you the travel... The mayor and council, the travel document?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay.
But I'll double check.
We just talked about that, so we have a meeting tomorrow morning, and we'll be discussing that.
Okay, and then also, an update on the travel. When are we going to bring the travel policy? Just, you know, just don't want it to fall in the archives, or fall in the system, or fall on the floor. Just want to keep it moving.
Well, the travel policy is already in existence, and we, when you travel, I'm going to attach the policy to your documents. But the travel policy is as recent as 2016. I met with the city attorney Monday, and we're going to be updating the travel pamphlet that is handed out to you from the city attorney's office, because that document was 2006. So the latest travel policy was updated as recently as 2016.
Correct. But, so I think what I'm asking for is that travel be approved before travel is traveled.
Oh, by the council, so all the meetings before you guys travel. And I asked, I spoke to the city clerk about that. We'll bring the policy. I'm also working with the city attorney on that. I'm sorry, I got a little confused there. So you guys want us to bring any travel that you're going to do in the future to the council first, and then approve it, and then we'll move forward. So that'll be added to the travel policy. City attorney and I did talk about that on Monday also.
Okay, so what's the timeline on that?
Prob, well, Greg, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I did, but I just want to ask every week till I get it.
And I also, I also requested that, it's not just the council, it's the city staff as well, be included in that.
I think it's against the charter for the council to approve staff travel. That gets approved by my office, but you guys can...
But we can make revisions if you want to, right?
I'm sorry?
Can we make, can the council make revisions to include staff as well?
You'd have to change the charter.
Okay.
But isn't it, when we approve the budgets?
I'm not sure I understand.
Oh wait, I'm sure you don't.
Me either.
But isn't it, when we approve the budgets, the budget, the annual budget, we approve travel for each department in the budget, correct?
There's a budget, a line item for travel and training in each department, as well as your department, as well as the city council.
So that's, you know, one way to control it, to help control it. And then, I guess that's, you know, pretty much it, just trying to get my leg better right now, yeah? And, happy Easter. Do we have a meeting before Easter?
No, it's Sunday.
No, so happy Easter, everybody. You know, it's quite confusing, because some, like my daughter, she doesn't have spring break until after Easter, a week after Easter. And then some folks are on spring break this week, so it's not just a uniform like it used to be. But happy Easter, everyone, happy Passover, whatever you celebrate. Have a happy celebration, and like always, I say, when you're cooking that big dinner, if you know somebody that's not as fortunate as you, and may appreciate a hot meal, share. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Mayor Brown, I forgot one thing. I wanted to also mention that we close in the memory of Mr. Iron's sister, Ms. Billy Irons.
Yes.
So I wanted to close in her memory as well. And I wanted to send my condolences to his entire family. I know personally what they're going through and stuff, and I ask that the entire city keeps them in prayers. Mr. Iron's a really good guy, and he comes here all the time, and, you know, he's a good guy, so I'm praying for their whole family.
Thank you. And one last thing, Madam Mayor. Just for the sake of the people and the sake of all the respect that we have for the Compton Fire Department, I'm going to ask that since it was in the media, just recently, social media, I don't know how far it went, but if we can have a presentation to address those issues in the next week or two, Mr. City Manager?
Okay, that was, all right, I don't want to get too far into that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we actually adjourned in memory of Billy Irons last week.
Oh, we did?
Yes, we did. Yes. We adjourned in memory. I read that his sister passed, so we did. And, let's see, I attended a few events. I was able to attend Counselwoman Zarita's health fair jubilee, and it was a great event. She had it all together. They were giving out food, they had the Rock Wall, they just had different booths that was passing out vital information. They just had a great time. They had the kids active, the seniors were active. So it was a really good event, Counselwoman Zarita, and I was happy to participate, because you weren't able to participate. So that's what we do. We're, we kind of have to back up each other, and so when I can't attend something, I will surely call on you guys and make sure that the event is well-presented. I also attended the pastors for Compton meeting, and there was prayer for the city at the pastors of Compton. And this is a group of pastors who got together, who just want to be positive in the community and pray for the city, and, you know, pray for the council people to do the right thing. And so I was happy to participate, and as I told them at the event, that I am here to do what is right, and I will continue to, if they have some things that they see where we're doing the wrong, going the wrong direction, please let us know. My upcoming events, I have a town hall meeting, April 12th, Burrell-McDonald Park, 6:00 PM, 2516 West Alondra. And at my meeting this time, we will have the city attorney talking about permit parking, Public Works, Mr. Johnson, and code enforcement. So come out on April 12th at 6:00 PM, and of course, Deputy Owens will be there with the sheriff's town report. So thank you, come on out to that. And also, I'm going to have a community garden opening on April 14th, 10:00 AM, Tucker Park at 560 West Laurel. I'm partnering with Greater Zion, they wanted to participate. So come on out and join the cleanup there, I mean, I'm sorry, planting of the community garden. And then the Compton Creek Task Force in conjunction with World Oil, we're actually having another cleanup, April 21st. I know the creek just tends to get, as soon as we clean it up, people are dumping it, and so we're going to try to promote more activity along the creek, so that, you know, people won't have the opportunity to dump as much, and eventually get the message that that's not where you dump, that they're, all you have to do, if you're a local resident, if you call the rubbish company, you can put your bulky item out, and they will pick it up. You don't have to just dump illegally in the City of Compton, and that's one of the things that we're trying to clean up. So the Compton Creek Cleanup will be April 21st, 8:00 AM, when we will meet at 417 West Alondra. And then, to encourage more use of the creek, we're going to have a 5K run on May 5th from 7:00 AM, beginning at 7:00 AM. And we'll start at Centennial High School, and we'll end at the Compton Gateway Center. Registration is at Compton Creek, 5Krun eventbrite.com. And, let's see, I think, Mr. City Manager, could you let me know? I think I brought last week where there was a resident that talked about the parking on both sides of Caldwell. So could you please just bring back a report, so that the residents will know about that? They're saying that they don't think that the emergency vehicles can get down the street properly, so I just would like something to... It was on Caldwell between Central and Wilmington, okay? And also, the signs, the new signs are going up, or when will it reach the third district? That's my question. And I know that we're still working on the tree trimming contract, so I will wait for that. And I also attended the Bulls playoff game, and it was a great event. The kids are so excited when they accomplish something, and that's what we're here for, to encourage our youth, so I was happy to be a part of that. I went to that after I left Counselwoman Zarita's event. And, let's see, I think that's all I have for today, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman. Counselwoman Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I will be hosting my quarterly business roundtable for District 4 on Wednesday, April 25th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Dollar High Community Center. This is an opportunity for you to network with local businesses, meet law enforcement, and city staff. Our guest speakers are Allison Phillips, Prime America, and Constance Anderson, and Joseph Dunking, a Pacific Coast Regional SBDC. A light lunch will be served. Also, the Compton Sheriff's Station, in conjunction with the Los Angeles County Public Defender's Office, will, and Faith Inspirational Church, presents an exclamationary clinic on April 21st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it would be at Faith Inspirational Church at 357 East Palmer Street here in Compton. This clinic is open to anyone wishing to clear their record. There are only 50 slots available. Please contact Deputy Rayford Owens to be placed on the list. Deputy Owens can be reached at 310-605-6542. That's 310-605-6542. And also, I really want to thank our Assemblymember Mike Gibson. I had a meeting with Ms. Mooney from the, from Compton Unified School District. They have already gotten the information in regards to the leadership program that you guys, that information's been given to them. Also, along with the application for the scholarship has also been presented to them as well, so they are going to be meeting with all the students there at different high schools and trying to make sure they get this application and all this information in their hands as well. So I really want to thank you guys. And also, the California Latino Legislative Caucus Foundation Scholarship also have a scholarship program. And this is, it's opening on March 15th. The applications are now available, starting April 1st. And the process will begin, and the deadline for submission for the application will be June 1st at 5:00 PM. All this must be done online, so if anyone is interested in applying for this scholarship, you can please give my office a call. That's 310-605-6552? 5662, I'm sorry, 310-605-5662. That's 310-605-5662. And we will be able to provide you with the information, so that you can go online and apply for the applications. So again, I think that's it. Oh, and I would like to close in memory of Dorthea Callaway. She's a long-time resident of Compton. Ms. Callaway was 87 years old. Her free-on-service will be held on Saturday, March 31st, at New Commandment Baptist Church at 15548 Paramount Boulevard here in the city of Paramount. And I also like to close in memory of Leroy Lee Porter, former teacher, coach, and administrator for, also there at Compton College. Mr. Porter's memorial service will be held on Saturday, March 31st, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 at the Compton Community College Student Lounge, 11111 East Artigia Boulevard. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Counselwoman Sharif.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Mr. City Manager, the residents are asking about what we're doing about all these mobile homes that are parking in the residential areas. We, I know my district has been kind of inundated with mobile homes, and I know that we can't regulate, but we can't regulate how long they stay on a particular street. So do we have a process that we're utilizing right now with these mobile homes?
Mayor and council, right now, there's, we have our overnight camping ordinance, but we also have the red tag process, which is a 72-hour notice to move the vehicle. If it's found to be inoperable or unregistered on the street, it can be towed. There are a number of challenges with the motorhomes, the county of Los Angeles, so there's 88 cities in the county. So not only is the county, in the cities, are the cities faced with this issue, the problem is the tow companies are starting to have difficulty in storing all these vehicles. They contain propane gas tanks, they have hazardous material, because they have human waste containers that are sometimes inoperable on these vehicles, and they are very, very difficult to salvage and dismantle, and they take up a large amount of space. I spoke with Ron Fisher, who's our representative from the county, and they're working on an ordinance to help out the dismantlers, as well as the tow companies. So there's a number of challenges faced with that, and then we also send out a number of community-based organizations that deal with the homeless. The problem with folks that live in these motorhomes, they don't feel like they're homeless. As you guys know, there are people who retire, and they travel the country in motorhomes, but somehow, this has become a new, a new way of life, and it's a, it's a, it's a new challenge for us in dealing with the homeless out in the streets.
And finally, Mayor, adjourn in memory of Dr. Lewis Simombo Thomas. He was Compton High Coach, and he passed away.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lee Thomas? Louis Thomas?
I'm sorry, I combined the last, Leroy Lee Porter. It's, yes, Louis. Thank you. Just quickly, I also had the opportunity to attend the unity service on last Friday, hosted by the pastors for Compton. And it was really a beautiful, beautiful event to have so many churches represented, and really focusing on unity and serving the community. I was there, along with my colleagues, Counselwoman Sharif, Counselwoman McCoy, and it was really just an inspiring evening, and I'm really hopeful for the clergy coming together in unity toward working together for a better Compton. So really happy that I could support. Also, had the chance to do a short interview on Hustle Rehab Radio, and it's really special to me, because it's, the host is a Compton resident, born and raised, still lives here, Ms. Angelique Baker, and she does a lot of women empowerment work. She has a great organization called Women Blessing Women, and so if you want to connect with a great group of positive women, you can check her out. Also, a special thank you to Senator Isadora Hall, who also had me for Intersections LA Radio, which is a great way to get local politics in our area, and they have great guest speakers every single week. And it's great, of course, to always support our own Compton residents and public servants. And special thank you to Assemblymember Gibson on working with the Department, California Department of General Services, and the California Military Department to secure the property known as the Compton Alameda Armory for the Compton Youth Academy. For many of you that do not know, the armory has been a site that has been in the care of Compton, and has gone back and forth between the state and the city. And now, the ownership is back in the hands of the city, and it's a great place, and it's the location of the YAL. Mr. Holyfield and other community organizations utilize that for the enrichment of our young people. And now, Assemblymember Gibson stepped in to ensure that the City of Compton would not lose ownership of this great asset in our community, so I commend him for his leadership. And then also, while I'm talking about the YAL, you should join us on Thursday, on the 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00, we have Compton resident Joey Blackice Davis, who is now an MMA fighter. He has been a world-renowned wrestler and champion, world champion, straight out of Compton, and now he's an MMA fighter. And so he is doing great work and giving back to youth, and doing youth empowerment. And so he's doing a match at the YAL. Of course, it's free, and I will be there to support him, and that's this Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And there are flyers in the back. A big thank you to Parks and Rec as well for helping to promote this event. And the previous week, I attended the AME Women in Ministry of the Southern California Conference Prayer Breakfast, and also, Assemblymember Gibson had a workshop called Filing Requirements and Appropriate Reporting for Faith-Based Organizations at New Mount Calvary. And for those churches that have, that are interested in starting community development corporations or really expanding their nonprofit arm, there was invaluable information, especially in light of the new tax code that was just approved and signed into law. And so there are some new loopholes about how to report your property, how to access different write-offs, and there was invaluable information, as you heard earlier from the Assemblymember's office. They are hosting another event coming up in Rancho Dominguez focused on nonprofits specifically. So please tap into their office and get that critical information, because as the new tax code has changed, some of the regulations have changed that are applicable to really operating your nonprofit and being successful in that. Upcoming events, we have our Compton Open Mic Still Going Strong, which is going to be held this Thursday, 7:00 PM at Dollar High. Of course, it's free, and we have a great host of Compton talent that come and do a variety of open spoken word, if they do music, all types of... do a variety of, um, open spoken word, um, if they, they do music, um, all types of expressions of art, so, um, please support our community and come on out and have a great time for the whole family. Also, we are closing our applications for our Bloom, um, which is our Becoming Ladies of Opulence and Magnitude 2.0 program. We are launching Phase 2, and if you have any young women that are interested in joining this free program, you can visit our Facebook page, which is just facebook.com backslash Mary Asia Brown, download the application, you can submit it, um, and be a part of this great group of young women. And just a quick commercial for the Atende Price Resource Center, which is the family center of Venus and Serena Williams located just across the street. There are free community sessions with Dr. Thima Bryant Davis, and the topic is Unplugged, so mindfulness after life storms, and how to develop therapeutic tools and strategies to address your emotions and experiences. A lot of times, we are dealing with stress and pressure just from our everyday lives, from trauma, um, in different forms of trauma, so this is a great way to get valuable tools on how to cope with them in a healthy way. Um, you can get that information, um, everything is free, they also provide lunch, and the address is 363 West Compton Boulevard. You can also visit their website to RSVP at www.yprcla.org. Um, also, want to acknowledge, last Saturday was National Walkout Day on March 14th, and I'm so proud of all the students that use their voice and collective power to organize and demand stricter gun control and reform. From the streets of our neighborhoods to the offices of the White House, we all must do our part to create a new culture that protects our families and policies to ensure the safety of our families. Um, I'm really hopeful to see a new generation that is rising up to demand a better future, um, not only for, um, themselves, but for those that are coming after them. Also, want to acknowledge that all the students that participated in the March for Our Lives in the City of Compton, there were other events going on at various school sites, and so I was able to, um, see our students also organizing right here in the City of Compton, so I commend them, and, um, it's a great thing when we see our young people stepping into leadership and taking that mantle on. Um, also, I just, for a quick follow-up, Mr. City Manager, if we can get an update on the solar lighting installation for the pilot locations that you had mentioned, if there is a date for those, um, pillars of lights being installed? I know one of the locations that you had identified was also the underpass or in that area, uh, where Mr. Arturo Fraser, um, unfortunately passed away, and we want to make sure that we can light up that area, um, because it's still highly trafficked by the church there.
Just a real quick comment about that. The, um, the lights, uh, there are no lights on the east side of the street there, um, so they'll have to put actually new, new poles.
Okay.
Uh, so Edison is involved in that. We did turn the lights on underneath the overpass, and so we'll have to keep checking on it, make sure that the wires are still there. Um, and I'll work with, uh, Dean Jones, who's working with those guys in Public Works, uh, on the pilot programs for the lighting.
Okay, if you can just, um, maybe email an update on, on when those lights will be installed, because I know there are also some key areas that the public, um, definitely utilizes. Um, also, just following up on two items, one is on the request for the four-way stop sign at School Street in Arambi. There are multiple accidents that happened at that intersection, and I know that we were, um, requesting a traffic study, but just following up on the status of that, and also for the intersection of El Segundo and Alameda, um, near Celerity. There is a new school there, um, and we've requested the stop sign, the school signage, um, for the speed zone and all of that. It's just, it still looks like it's an industrial area, but children are crossing the street there, so we need that, that signage up there. Councilwoman McCoy mentioned the mobile homes. I know I sent you a couple of locations of residents complaining, um, and really being concerned about suspicious activity, and so we could, um, just get those follow-ups as well, and a big thank you in advance to the sheriffs. I know Captain Thatcher and his team have been working, um, with the city on that as well. And that is all I have, um, and we will close in the memories of Dorothea, excuse me, we will recess in the memory, thank you, Madam City Clerk, of Dorothea Callaway, uh, Mr. Leroy, also known as Lee Porter, and Dr. Lewis Thomas.
And he was the band teacher.
Oh, band, the band teacher for Compton High School. Maybe have a motion to recess?
Solo, second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown? Yes.
We will now resume the Compton City Council meeting.
We will now resume the Compton City Council meeting with the report out from the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a closed session discussion. Present in closed session was City Council without Councilman Galvain. For discussion was Bradford versus City of Compton, California Second Appellate District, case number B two seven six two three six. Adam Minin versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number TC zero two nine zero three three. And McGee versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BC six two eight six one eight. Pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A, there's no reportable action taken in these matters. And that concludes the report out.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. May we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Good night.